Good evening. Everybody get your seats. Okay, the Monday, October 5th, 2020 public hearing is called to order. May we please observe a moment of silence? Thank you. We have the Pledge of Allegiance and Mission Statement by Board Member Lakeisha Clu Atkinson. Please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
All right. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that would foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you, Ms. Atkinson. Welcome to the Portsmouth City School Board Public Hearing to solicit comments on the proposed renaming of certain public schools as the committee may determine. Pursuant to Sections 22.1-78 and 22.1-79 of the Code of Virginia, as amended, and School Board Policy FFAR-R and FFA, Committee duly appointed by the Portsmouth School Board will hold public hearings to receive suggestions for names on the proposed renaming of certain public schools as the committee may determine. To date, the committee has received and tends to consider the renaming of Woodrow Wilson High School, James Hurst Elementary School, John Tyler Elementary, and others as the committee may so determine. Pursuant to Section 22.1-253, 136 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, the Portsmouth City School Board will solicit comment on the proposed renaming for the purpose of the hearing tonight. For housekeeping purposes, social distancing will be practiced. Masks must be worn at all times. Also tonight, we're pleased to have with us the Chairman of our school board, Mr. Claude Parent is here with us. And are there any other school board members that have come in? I do that, we do have another forum going on tonight, so many of them are involved in that. And Mr. Lamb had a work-related emergency that he will not be with us tonight. We also have our Superintendent, Dr. Eli Bracy III with us, our school board attorney, Mr. Adam Carroll, our Deputy Clerk, Ms. Brenda Stewart, and our Principal, I saw him, Dr. Timothy Johnson. Thank you all for coming. And also, the timekeeper, Ms. Atkinson, she will hold up a sign when you have 30, when you only have 30 seconds left, and then she will hold up the red stop sign when it's time for you to end. You have five minutes to speak. So, other than that, I believe that we've taken care of the housekeeping orders for the day, and now we will have our instructions for the speakers, our Deputy Clerk, Ms. Stewart. Thank you.
The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, your name will be called when it is your turn to address the committee. When speaking, please keep your comments to five minutes and focus on renaming of the schools only.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Our first speaker is Mrs. Ethel Streeter.
Madam Chairman, Dr. Bracy, members of the Portsmouth School Board. My name is Ethel Streeter, and I am a graduate of the 1976 class of Manor High School. We took great pride in that year because it was a celebration all over the United States. That year was the 20th anniversary, or as we called it, the Bicentennial. It would make sense to change Wilson back to Manor for the following reasons. First of all, the school is located in the Manor neighborhood, and its structure is attached to the Manor Public Library. But most importantly, Manor High School was its original name. Graduates of Manor High School will have their school again, which matters the most when it comes to things like class reunions. There are teachers that are still working at Wilson who are on staff at Manor High School. Mr. Gilbert Yancy taught me Spanish, he taught my daughter, who was also a Wilson High School graduate, and he is currently teaching my grandson. Mr. Yancy has taught three generations, but our legacy was taken away and given to the folks on the other side of town. Presently, I am on the faculty of IC Norcom High School. When you compare the homecoming festivities between the two schools, Manor's homecoming has become a desolate place with displaced people. On the other hand, Norcom's homecoming is filled with cheer and jubilation of people who are 70, 80, 90-plus years old, who still come all over the country to celebrate with fellow Grayhams their rich tradition and legacy, but our legacy was stolen. So I'm asking that our school legacy be restored to its original condition. I remember that when I was in the band, we did not have uniforms. Our uniforms were t-shirts, jeans, and a navy hat. Each month, we toured to raise money to get uniforms for our marching band. As a team, I would drive to Miss Smith's Pie Company and ask the manager to donate pies and cakes for our uniforms. Every month, I left Miss Smith's Pie Company with a trunk full of pies and cakes. For about a year, we were able to purchase the uniforms for the entire band, only to have our uniforms thrown away. When Woodrow Wilson took possession, everything was thrown out. Researching this Smithsonian magazine this weekend, President Woodrow Wilson ignored the global health crisis in 1918. The influenza pandemic killed over 675,000 Americans in 15 months. Does that sound familiar? President Woodrow Wilson's daughter and personal secretary was stricken also with the disease. Even President Wilson himself contracted the disease and became delirious. The nation was never told the full story. Despite his personal experience with the pandemic, President Wilson never publicly acknowledged the disease, reckoned having on the entire world. Sounds familiar? There is another school that is not on the list that research needs to be discovered is Craddock Middle. I'm not sure, because I worked at Craddock Middle for years, but I do know that Admiral Craddock may have had slaves on the ship. Craddock is the oldest neighborhood going back to the 1700s. When we were children and we lived in Cavalier Manor, we could not go to the Craddock neighborhood for fear of being killed by the Ku Klux Klan. Romans 5:3 says, "We glory in tribulations, knowing that tribulations work in patience, and patience work in experience, and experience work in hope." So keep open your mouth.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Streeter. And I would ask all speakers to please keep your mask on. We can hear you clearly, but you do have to keep your mask on. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Greg Vass.
Good evening, everyone. First, thanks to the school board for the opportunity to address this gathering of citizens and for their service to the city. I would also like to publicly thank my teachers, administrators, and support personnel who cleaned up after us, fed us, and did many, many other duties during my 12 years in the Portsmouth Public School System. Thanks to those individuals, I was prepared, much better prepared, for the challenges that occurred after those first 12 years. My path through this system included John Tyler Elementary School, Harry Hunt Junior High School, and Woodrow Wilson High. As Woodrow Wilson has been the name of a Portsmouth Public High School for 100 years, I have had sibling parents and grandparents graduate from WWHS. This is certainly true for Norcom, Craddock, and Churchland High Schools also. I would like to address tonight the possible renaming of John Tyler and Woodrow Wilson High School. Like many cities, Portsmouth schools are named after both locations or neighborhoods, Churchland, Manor, Craddock, and individuals, Israel C. Norcom and Woodrow Wilson. Some are local public servants and leaders, and some are national, like John Tyler and Woodrow Wilson. This diversity in the naming process is a good thing. The only possible drawback to this is that the individuals whose names are used are quite human and flawed, like the rest of us, and make decisions that they regretted later or made for some other reason lost to time. I'm certain that I would not have agreed with all the decisions made with either of these two native-born Virginian presidents. However, no school, or bridge, or highway is named after an individual for what they did not do or what errors in judgment or indiscretions they commit. They are named for what they do to improve the lives of their countrymen or fellow city residents. John Tyler had the distinction of being the sixth of the eight presidents born in Virginia to date. Woodrow Wilson was the most recent. Who knows? The next one could be attending this school or any other Portsmouth school right now. John Tyler also had the distinction of being the father of the most children, 14 or 15, depending on the reference you check, of any other president. This made him a favorite for the names of many Virginia elementary schools. He loved children. My own grandfather had 15 in his family. I can't explain that, but it happens. And as a recent news article said, and wrap your head around this, John Tyler was born in 1790 and has two living grandchildren, aged 92 and 96. Woodrow Wilson had many accomplishments during his two terms as president, including the profound step of allowing half the country to vote. The 19th Amendment granting the ballot box to women was approved during his tenure in office. What he did here is profoundly impactful right now. Peace, or the pursuit of it, is one of the most critical roles of a president. Here is where the names of Woodrow Wilson and John Tyler overlap again. After his term as president, Tyler retired to Virginia, and according to the White House Historical Association materials, he was involved in a very important committee conference to stop the war between the North and South, doing whatever they could to stop it. Unfortunately, it was unsuccessful. Woodrow Wilson, like his successor Franklin Delano Roosevelt 20 years later, did his best to keep this country neutral during World War I. World War I started in 1914, the U.S. entered three years later in 1917. After that year, and undoubtedly for keeping many young people safe at home and out of harm's way in a distant land, a high school in Portsmouth, Virginia was renamed after him. I'm proud to be an alumni of Woodrow Wilson High School and hope that many more Portsmouth students will be able to call themselves a president. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vass. Our next speaker is Mrs. Elizabeth Marley.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Elizabeth Marley, and I am formerly a 1988 graduate of Manor High School. A Mustang! Today in our country, we are witness to polarizing views on politics, race, medical, and economics. Our country has a difficult history, and unfortunately, that history is sometimes written by those in power. We are now being better educated on areas of our past that have been, for lack of a better word, glossed over. President Woodrow Wilson accomplished many things during his presidency. For that, he has 15 high schools in the U.S. with his name on them, including a memorial high school in Fisherville near his birthplace in Stanton. Aside from being a Virginian, Portsmouth really doesn't have any kind of pull to Mr. President Wilson. But Woodrow Wilson has a disturbing history with civil rights and segregation. In a 1914 Oval Office meeting with civil rights leader William Monroe Trotter regarding segregation of federal government employees, President Wilson is quoted as saying, "We were seeking not to put the Negro employees at a disadvantage, but to make arrangements which would prevent any kind of friction between the white employees and the Negro employees." So the president is saying that there will be friction if blacks and whites work together. This attitude is in direct contrance to the principles for which this building was built and named. I believe most of Portsmouth wants Wilson's name removed from this building, but the new name should be one of inclusion, diversity, and excellence. Manor is that name. In a time when race relations were moving forward, the city of Portsmouth took a bold step in merging several different communities: Cavalier Manor, Hodges Manor, Elizabeth Manor, Park Manor. Our school embodies this, with a white hand and a black hand clasped together saying, "We are united." Our school colors say it as well, black and white and red, the color of love, shout out, "We are united." Most of my life has been spent within 400 yards of this school. My family and I have history here. I played softball, my aunt and I were cheerleaders, my other aunt was part of a group that painted the Mustang on that wall, which has now been painted over. I love this place. It's a part of what makes me me, and I want it back. And so do we, of Manor High School. Stand here today, a generation eager to lead the way. Our spirits we offer, torches of light, flamed by your guidance, knowledge, and might. Our hands clasped together, brothers and sisters we stand, to dedicate our future to your demand. To represent justice, honor, and truth, we stand. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Marley. Our next speaker, Dr. Charles Carrington.
Renaming of the schools in Portsmouth. Thank you, committee. Thank you, school board. Thank you, city of Portsmouth. Thank you, Manor High School alumni. As a representative of Manor High School Alumni Association and the class of 1974 myself, we thank each and every one of you that are here today. We thank the comments. We have all read the headlines over the last year to six months and even up until today. Newport News renaming four schools, Fairfax naming two schools, Lee in Arlington being renamed, Prince William County renaming their schools Jackson and Stonewall Jackson. They're getting rid of these names. You ask why? Because these schools have one thing in common: They are all a product of being named after and in honor of racist, segregated, slave owners, Confederate leaders, the worst of the worst for this country. Yes, in those days, they were revered. They were the cream of the crop. They were the happy people. We named this school Woodrow Wilson because he was famous in those days. Woodrow Wilson, D.C., Woodrow Wilson, Camden, New Jersey, Fargo, North Dakota, Long Beach, California, all are changing their names. I wonder why? Just a few of the hundreds of schools across the country that have been renamed or are being renamed because people are thinking better. Yes, these great men did great things, but the underlying reason why the schools were named was to what? Further segregation, suppress the blacks, suppress integration. John Tyler, you know his record. James Hurst, you know his record. But I'm here to speak on behalf of the Alumni Association, so I will address Woodrow Wilson, a terrible record of desegregating the federal government. He pulled out black leaders when he became president and replaced them with less qualified European descent Americans. Wilson was known for doing what? Nothing to prevent the racism throughout the country. Matter of fact, it went on unchecked. He spearheaded it. The Ku Klux Klan was rabid, white supremacy was on the rise, and there was dashed officers of the law throughout the country that took it for granted that black lives did not matter. And this was what? In Woodrow Wilson days, we know renaming Woodrow Wilson is a very sensitive topic in the city of Portsmouth, a history of this nation. We cannot correct all the wrongs, but the school board this year has a chance by starting to rename some Portsmouth City schools to reflect the diversity of their people. Yes, you, the school board, will get a lot of stat. You will hear from all their adults that have hundreds of years of history with this school. They will also talk about the economical impact of having to repaint the lockers. We got paint, we can handle that. They will talk about the heritage of the school, the years and the years, yes, but others will say, "Ah, I see nothing wrong with it. What's in the name?" Everything is in the name. Some of the alumni will cry. Their hearts will be broken. They will never be the same. You know why? Because we Mustangs, we feel that pain. We know how it is not to have your school anymore, having to pay every year just to come up here for a weekend. We have to pay the school board, we have to pay the city, we have to pay security, we have to bring in our own people. Current students turned down our signs, said, "Get off our property, this is Woodrow Wilson, not matter." We won't do that to you all, not to follow a team anymore, not to have any support of the community. We feel you, Woodrow Wilson alumni, because we felt that, because we was a guest in our own home. For you, Wilson alumni, we stand with you. We will make sure that you will survive. Did I get to 30? So, it closes. No matter how long, no matter how ingrained, we must end it today and close it. We pray that the committees, report to the full committee, will echo our voices today. Thank you for your, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Carrington. Our next speaker is Reverend Dr. Celeste Heath.
Good evening, members of the school board and guests. My name is Celeste Heath, and I'm a 1980 graduate of Manor High School. I come, don't take my time. I come tonight to encourage you to change the name of this school from Woodrow Wilson back to Manor High School. Though I entered as a freshman in the fall of 1976, I became a Manor Mustang months before the school ever opened. My mother, Harriet Heath, was a founding faculty member of Manor. She was the chorus teacher, and she along with band director Emery Fears created one of the best high school music programs in the region, if not the state. High school music programs demand a high level of commitment and time by students and faculty, and that includes the faculty member's family. My whole family was joyfully all-in as Manor Mustangs from the beginning. As a child, I listened intently to the discussions about how different the school was going to be from the other high schools in Portsmouth. One of the names considered for the school was Neil Armstrong High School after a national hero, the first person to walk on the moon, and the mascot would be astronauts. But the name Manor was chosen to represent the communities which would come together to form a new, modern, contemporary school. There was a vision and a dream of bringing two communities together that were racially diverse as integration was beginning. The school design with open classrooms and modular scheduling were seen really as disasters waiting to happen. These progressive ideas had never been tried. In the church, we say the last seven words are, "We've never done it that way before." And many adopted those words. There was resistance and naysayers. The promised swimming pool was cut out of the plan. The dream was beaten down. It seemed destined to fail before a student ever walked in the front door. The negative criticism and attitudes about the new Manor High School were thinly veiled fear of integrating communities that had only lived separately. Expectations were low. You heard in a letter last week from Ken Pfeiffer that the longest, he was the longest-tenured teacher at Manor, that when he interviewed for a teaching position in Portsmouth, his interviewer told him, "You don't want to go to Manor." But he was, and he loved every minute. What the detractors did not anticipate was the talent What the detractors did not anticipate was the talent, perseverance, and tenacity of the faculty, administrators, and students to create a school where academic achievement and excellence in the arts were goals. The critics did not expect teachers who were committed to seeing their students succeed in all of their pursuits. They could not anticipate students who would learn to cross racial barriers to build new friendships and create a new community of love and respect. From mothers, you have heard all the achievements of Manor Mustangs, Olympic champions, music industry icons, entertainment executives, high-ranking military officials, and public servants in the community. And Manor certainly has had way more than its share of preachers, of which I am one. I don't need to share those names and achievements with you again. The point is that Manor Mustangs not only fulfilled their original dream and met the goal, the school far exceeded anyone's expectations. As the dream of this school was developing, the name of the national hero was not chosen. In its wisdom, the school board chose to build a new community by naming it after the communities the school would serve. In 1992, the school board chose to rename it for someone who did not represent or live out its core values. In recent months, in the pursuit for racial justice, our country has learned more about this president who did not value all people as equals. You have an opportunity to reverse this mistake. These inspiring words of Maya Angelou speak to us in this time and place, when she said, "Do the best you can until you know better. Then, when you know better, do better." The predecessors of this school board may or may not have known better, but now we do. So do better. Give the school the name that brings people together. In 1972, a committee of students from Wilson and Craddock came together, and they spent their senior year as Manor Mustangs. And when they wrote the words of our alma mater, they captured the spirit, vision, and dream of our school with the closing text, "To represent justice, honor, and truth, we stand apart of Manor High School." There must be...
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Celeste Heath. Our next speaker, Ms. Deion Copeland. Good evening.
Once again, I am Deion Copeland, a proud Manor Mustang class of 1989, a business owner in the city for over 28 years. Flag squad, track, basketball, I did it. I had the pleasure last week of speaking, but since that time, some things have been said that concern me. One, a few people have mentioned the cost of the name change. In all actuality, it's free to change a name. It's a name, you can change it. Any calls pertaining to uniforms, cosmetic changes, et cetera, that's been mentioned could be done gradually, just like it was in 1992. All of it didn't happen at the same time. They did a little bit at a time. And as the young man say, we know how to paint. Got quite sure we have painters and carpenters in our class, in our school alumni. The next question was, how do you think a 17-year-old senior would feel about the name change? Probably the same way a 17-year-old senior felt 27 years ago, when they decided to change the name during their senior year. So with that being said, the next graduating class should be offered the same option as they did, to have a choice. You can have Manor, or you can have Wilson on your diploma. There's options there. Then, I have personally spoke to a lot of Wilson alumni, and they say to me, that's not my school, that's your school, that's Manor. We don't go to games, we don't support the, anything having to do with the school because our school was on Willett Drive. So, last week, after the meeting, I overheard someone say, "All of this for a name that means nothing? No, it means nothing to you. It means something and everything to us." So I ask y'all to dig deep and choose Manor High School as the name that replaces the one on this building. And remember, Manor Mustangs matter.
Thank you all for your passion. Our next speaker, Dr. Andrea Robey.
Thank you Portsmouth School Board for an opportunity to stand before you. My name is Andrea Moore Robey. I'm an 81 graduate of Manor High School because I came out early. But I identify with the 82s as well, because that's where most of my friends were. We should learn from the past, live in the present, and look forward to our future. There is a term called anticipatory obedience. It basically means adapting instinctively without reflecting. A Yale psychologist, Stanley Milgram devised an experiment to show just how this works. Milgram told the subjects that they would be applying electrical shock to other participants in an experiment. The people attached to the wires on the other side were in, on the plan and only pretended to be shocked. As the subjects thought they had shocked the participants, they saw a horrible sight. People whom they did not know and whom they had no grievance seemed to be suffering greatly, pounding on the glass and complaining of pains in their heart. Even so, most still followed Milgram's instructions and continued to apply what they thought were even greater shocks without reflecting on the health and the well-being of their subjects. Was it because they were behind the glass and couldn't feel what those enduring the shots felt? There are three types of people. Those who watched what happened years ago and did nothing, those who wondered what happened and how we got here, and those who make things happen for a better future. The 28th President of the United States, Woodrow Wilson, perpetrated violence and inequality for Black Americans. His presidency was celebrated by Southern segregationists. Wilson allowed the film The Birth of a Nation to be screened in the White House. It praised the Confederacy and in particular, the Ku Klux Klan. It portrayed blacks as uncouth and uncivilized. He rolled back hard-fought economic progress for Black Americans overseeing the segregation of multiple agencies of the federal government. He oversaw unprecedented segregation in federal offices. He received strong criticism for being a supporter of racial segregation and white supremacy. He even allowed his cabinet members to segregate their departments. By the end of 1913, many departments, including the Navy, had segregated workspaces, restrooms, and cafeterias. In 1914, William Monroe Trotter, a civil rights leader, led a delegation of blacks to meet with the president to discuss the surge of segregation in the country, only to be thrown out of the Oval Office. We should learn from the past, live in the present, but look forward to our future. But let me tell you about Manor High School. In 1972, Manor High School opened its doors to several diverse communities in Portsmouth. It was named for its ethnic neighborhoods, like Cavalier Manor, the predominantly white, the predominantly black Cavalier Manor, and then also Hodges Manor, who was our sisters and brothers by another month, mother, our white community, where we came together as one. Cavalier Manor was developed by George II McLean in the 1950s while the civil rights movement was still going strong. Cavalier Manor provided home ownership and tremendous pride to many African-American families. Back then, it was one of the few neighborhoods where African-Americans were allowed to own houses as deed restrictions prohibited ownership in other neighborhoods. Middle-class African-American families living in the suburbs of streets named after African-American entertainers like Count Basie, Lena Horne, Sonny Liston, Billy Eckstein, and Duke Ellington. City employees, Navy officers, shipyard workers, nurses, and schoolteachers being given their first opportunity for home ownership. You could buy a 1,200 square foot, three-bedroom, one-bath home for less than $10,000. On the property records, tales by the city assessors checked off the box for being colored. It's Portsmouth's largest neighborhood. We should learn from our past, live in the present, and look forward to our future. It's the residents of Cavalier Manor who brought about the changes that happened in the world back then. But let me tell you about Manor High School. Manor High School was built as a school, as a school without walls. We didn't have walls, and it's time to tear down the walls of injustice. It's time to tear down the walls of segregation. It's time to tear down the walls of stopping us to come together. Another thing about Manor High School is that we had a square. It's my Manor High School education that taught me that a square is four sides with equality. So we should have equality in this place today. Learn from the past, live in the present, and we shall never.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Robey. Our next speaker, Mr. Brianna Close.
My name is Brianna Close, but everybody know me as Byron Brown, Bruno, even B.C. But of course, that's my family. All right. I am a graduate of Manor High School, 1979. I would like to read for you, since you can't be here. Also, another graduate of 1979, her name is Carlton Gattler. My name, he says, a state. My name is Carlton Gattler. I am a 1979 graduate of Manor High School. We celebrate our 40th reunion in June of last year. It was a good to see more of my former classmates and remembrance of old times. Attending the homecoming football game is usually associated with unions, reunions. That has been the same, has been the case since the name changed to Wilson High School years ago. It would be well-deserved and a tribute to all the Manor students to have the original name changed back. So I am making the contribution to this committee to consider how the name may have been originated with a majority of students' population coming from Cavalier Manor and Hodges Manor neighborhoods. Also, in remembrance, we are hold dear to our own hearts and former teachers, athletic events, classes, and friendships that was made here. Thank you for this opportunity to hear his voice. This is Carlton Gattler, class of 1979. Now, as a former football player, track star, I wouldn't say track star, but play star. Football player, track, and also, everybody know my wrestler, as a wrestler. I did a lot of things here at Manor High School, because that's what you're supposed to do in high school. At high school, you're supposed to learn to find yourself. All right? I was shy, I was quiet. Yes, I was. I was shy and quiet. But through Manor High School, and of course, Martin, I will stay on there, I am not letting my voice be heard now, that I want, if you're concerned, to change Manor High School back to its original glory. All right? My family needs to be changed, come here again, because Manor is my family. All right? I don't know, it was like, we was, the name was ripped from the bosoms of the Manor High youth on, community. And it really hurt. I mean, we had nothing to relate to, nothing. I come to games up here with my stepson, who was out here playing for Wilson, and I cried, because it was Manor High School. I walked through here, still see the dam on the door. It hurts. So I please, please, reform this board to change the name back to Manor High School, to keep our family together and bring the lustrous name that was back there, dear, now, and keep it there forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Close.
Greetings to the Chair of the School Board, Mr. Claude Parent, to the Portsmouth School Board Committee members, to the amazing Superintendent of the Portsmouth Public Schools, Dr. Eli Bracy, who's doing an outstanding job as our children in this new normal of virtual. Thank you, committee, for the opportunity at this public hearing regarding the renaming of schools, to offer the following arguments in support of the renaming of Woodrow Wilson High School back to its original name of Manor High School. My name is Simone Ruffin-Thomas. I am in the class of 1980, and I participated in the Mighty Marching Mustangs under the leadership of Theodore Richardson, and also participated with the Lady Mustangs Track Argument one. I am reminded during this historically prolific 21st century that the fight and courageous struggle for the implementation of racial integration within the United States was a cruel, harsh, brutal, and dangerous effort that produced some hard-fought wins for African-Americans. Case in point, the United States Supreme Court, Brown versus the Board of Education, Topeka, Kansas, 1954. The law of the land that overturned the longstanding United States Supreme Court's case precedent of Plessy versus Ferguson, 1896, that endorsed white supremacy and a system of organized white privilege within the United States by declaring that separate but equal was indeed unconstitutional. Further, through the nullification of federal mandates and laws by the state of Virginia, like numerous other Southern segregated states, it would take nearly 20 years after the United States Supreme Court's Brown versus the Board of Education, Topeka, Kansas, decision for the implementation of racial integration within the public school system and within the state of Virginia. Case in point, the Portsmouth Public School system to really become a reality. Therefore, integrations, integration, implementation within the United States, the state of Virginia and the city of Portsmouth, Virginia, was complex, complicated, and tangled. Argument two. In the... Argument two. In the age of President Barack Obama, who possessed the courage, the bravery, and skill to integrate the highest political office of the United States of America, the office of the American presidency, how can we truly reconcile the Woodrow Wilson presidency? The archival record of the Wilson presidency reflects that President Woodrow Wilson, and it's already been stated here tonight on numerous occasions, was a supporter of racial segregation and white supremacy. Moreover, President Woodrow Wilson accepted segregation as part of a policy to promote racial progress by shocking the social system as little as possible. Someone else also talked about this friction. President Wilson believed segregation removes friction between the races. So it is a travesty of justice for the city of Portsmouth to continue to attach ourselves to President Woodrow Wilson's racist thinking, racist policies, and racial biases.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Our next speaker is Ms. Jackie Kendall.
Good evening, Committee. I am Jackie Kendall, and first and foremost, I'd like to say to all our educators, Happy World Teacher Day. Happy World Teacher Day, dear. It is indeed an honor for me to speak for one of my teachers, former teachers here, and mentors, one of the founding teachers here at Manor High School, and that's Celestine Hardy. Ms. Hardy was a teacher here and retired here at Home Economics, which now you call Consumer Science, and she's 90-plus years. So let me read this for you in her own words. "My name is Celestine Hardy, a parent and former teacher of Manor High School. I taught Home Economics for the opening of the school and the fall of 1972 until I retired in 1991. Manor High School was a model school, not only in the city of Portsmouth, but also for many schools throughout the Hampton Roads area. It was equipped with the most modern equipment available. We had outstanding leadership, an excellent faculty team dedicated to facilitating learning. Parents were an integral segment of the school and were committed in their support for the school's ongoing success. Nothing was so challenging for them to overcome. Manor High School was the only high school in Portsmouth to promote the naval ROTC program to the entire student body. This program was keeping with the city's naval history. The naval, Norfolk Naval Shipyard and the surrounding Elizabeth River was outstanding resources for this program. The students were presented with opportunities to visit the shipyard as well as go on trips to the surrounding waters. Many students went on to have successful careers in the armed forces as a result of this initial exposure to the military science. The students came to Manor with great excitement, not only because it was new, but because it gave them a sense of pride and a school in their community. They were balanced student participation in academics, arts, sports, chorus, debate, team catering, and student government. One of the aspects of the school they impressed me was by how the whole student body and community worked along together. There was an inclusion of blacks and whites in every phase of the school. We were one big family. When the school opened, the band was not equipped with uniforms, flags, and other accessories that make a band stand out. The parents worked hard to help purchase uniforms through various fundraisers. My son, George Hardy, traced a picture of a Mustang that he found, and the school board approved it as the Manor Mustang logo. It was a privilege for me to make the first flag for the Flag Squad and be a part of the outstanding marching band. I have a sense of urgency for the renaming of Wilson High School and turning it back to the original name of Manor High School. I feel this way not only because of my 90-plus years, but also for the sake of those who paved the way for the monumental success of the lives of those who were involved. The students, parents, teachers, administrators, and community were all a part of this journey. I thank you for your decision-making process and the committee for allowing me to voice my thoughts. My prayers, that is the request for a name change to be granted. Celestine Hardy, Home Economics Teacher, Manor High School." You know, I am so inspired by Ms. Hardy, you know, to be a teacher here. So I say to you, Dr. Bracy and Dr. Johnson, there's a PE job, I'm gonna hit the send button when I get out of here.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall. Our next speaker is Mr. Brendan Allen.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Committee Chair Williams, Ms. Atkinson. So, last week, I gave you my words about this building should be returned to its original name of Manor High School. And so, I was a little bit shocked to see that after that speech that I had for the most part been well-received, to see someone take issue with me speaking before the committee, because I was a teacher here, and I shouldn't be speaking about a name change because, in their words, I'm poisoning the minds of students. Now, I teach biology, so I don't have time to talk about Woodrow Wilson. I'm busy trying to teach the students about viruses so that they don't think it's a hoax like some adults. So, that's what I'm doing. But despite my being a Portsmouth resident, a graduate of Portsmouth, and an employee of Portsmouth, they believe that I should put it, shut up and teach. But then I remember that these same people, as much as they praise staples such as Dr. Martin Luther King, Rosa Parks, and the Honorable John Lewis, now, a few years ago, they hated them when they spoke up, called them names, threw slurs in their direction, all because these icons were getting into some good trouble. Well, today, I will teach, but I will not shut up. I put on my teaching clothes, and so last week, I said the school board has an opportunity to retest after the failure of the first test some nearly 30 years ago. So today will be the remediation. And if you don't know what remediation is, it's that part in between the first test that they failed and the second test where you retest, where you get that extra teaching, just that part. So, since this time, since my words were too strong for some to handle, I won't give you my words to teach you this. I will give you the words of some of the nearly 4,700 citizens who have made their voices heard through the reclaim the name petition to have the school name changed back to its rightful owner of Manor High School. This is in contrast to the 368 alumni of Wilson who signed their petition to keep it as Wilson. And I don't see that as a comparison, but it should speak volumes that an overwhelming majority of citizens support this name change of a school that has not existed in 30 years versus the current one. This petition features Manor alumni, former students, current students, and even some Wilson alum. The names will remain anonymous to the public, but the school will receive the full updated copy, because I know how people can judge. So the first comment, "I'm not signing because we need to remove, I'm signing because we need to remove the stains in our city. Additionally, Manor High School is named for the surrounding neighborhood it serves. It should have never been changed in the first place. Portsmouth did not consider the alumni from Manor only to those who attended Wilson. It was unfair, ridiculous, and biased towards the minority, only giving results to the majority." Another comment wrote, "Change it back to the original name Manor. Don't wait too long to right this wrong." And I like that one. "Our original school name represents diversity, legacy, and pride. Manor's high school's name should have never been changed. I am a proud graduate of 1973 Gold Mustangs." The other, another comment, "I attended the original Woodrow Wilson High School as a freshman. I agree, Manor High School is more appropriate." I am science petition because when you name something, it not only mean that you are remembering the name, but all it stood for. And in the case of Woodrow Wilson High School, it would take us back to 1913 through 1921, the woman suffered, a man that was a vocal defender of the KKK and an advocate of colonialism around the world. Woodrow Wilson also segregated federal workers in Washington, DC. I could go on and on, why not, why not to honor this man? Now you tell me, why should history remember this man with the name of a high school, which is the last thought for our young minds before we send them into the world? Let us stand on the right side of history and do the noble thing and change the name back to Wilson. Oh, Manor, 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 Manor. I'll read it the next time already. So as the next time, as an upcoming sophomore at Woodrow Wilson, the name should be changed to Manor High School. This next one is from a student who goes to a different high school. "I'm signing this petition as a student leader of Portsmouth Public Schools, change the name back to Manor High School." And lastly, if that was not enough, on the same Facebook post that I was attacked on, several Wilson alum voiced their concerns to their poster, and they said, "As a graduate of Woodrow Wilson, I feel that Woodrow Wilson ceased to exist when the building on Willett Drive was torn down. Manor High School should have never been renamed." And so, I leave you with the same way I leave my students on the day of their test. I've given you all the skills and information you need to pass, now all you have to do is use them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members, guests, and public. I am speaking on behalf of Mr. James Pageant, who was a 1977 graduate of the Manor High School Mustangs. I recognize the awesome responsibilities you all have in deciding the appropriate thing to do about renaming Woodrow Wilson High School, so I would try to keep to this point. Please vote to have the name of Manor High School returned to its original conception and building. I graduated in 1977 from Manor. However, my wife, brother, and sister all went to Wilson. After much thought, I believe there are some areas of the main justifications. It was not usually taught in history books, nor did many of us know the extreme racist actions Woodrow Wilson took when he elected the office such as laying off black federal workers en masse, a debt owed to many of his racist political pawnbrokers to get him into office. Since the changing of the name of Manor to Wilson, I am not aware of any previous Wilson graduate who considers this their school. All of my relatives and friends consider it gone. Even the PBN Facebook group appears only to reference Wilson in the past tense and in its previous building. Manor alumni are still active and supportive in their school, even though the name changed so many years before. They are a positive group that embraces the diversity Manor was founded on and truly love their school for what it stands for. You have the opportunity to make a positive change that alumni on both sides will support and that will bring a positive change to the community. Thank you for the time, take, thank you for taking the time to read my letter. My best to all of you, James E. Pageant, Retired Pharmaceutical Manager, University of Richmond Alumni, Manor High School Activities, SGA President, Presented Approved Proposal to School Board, President's Award for Leadership, Football Letter, Track Letter, Naval Junior ROTC Officer, Drama French Club, Boy State, and Best Citizen. I am a 1978 proud graduate of the great class of 78 from Manor High School. I participated in the course and a lot of other activities that were going on in this building. This might be Woodrow Wilson right now, but the blood and the footprints of the Mustangs roamed through this building daily. Regardless of what it is called, we are Manor High School. I feel like it would be an injustice to not give us back our name that was taken from us, for whatever reason, that was not justifiable to the alumni. So tonight, I ask you school board members to please take into all considerations, all speakers, and everything that has to do with Manor.
Thank you, Ms. Patillo. Next speaker, Ms. Lasagna Anderson? No? Okay. All right.
Good afternoon, school board. Thank you for letting me speak, but I'm tired of hearing my racist history drug through the mud and not giving them credit for anything that they have done. I realize some of their, some of them had flaws in their character.
Excuse me, could you please put your mask on?
Oh, I thought it was, okay. Okay. In their character, but Martin Luther King, the great leader that he was, his character was flawed because he cheated on his wife, Coretta. Nobody, nobody is trying to tear his legacy down or tear his monuments down. And I'm sad and appalled I'm having to defend destroying white history. Plus, the people who named these schools aren't here to defend themselves. Woodrow Wilson honored, was honored by the people electing him President of the United States. He was born in Stanton, Virginia, son of a Presbyterian minister. He ran Princeton University with so much success, it made the Democrats turn their eyes on him for president. They claim he didn't reach out to the blacks. Wilson was a child and lived during the Reconstruction. He saw them carry Jefferson Davis in chains through Georgia. The South was really treated dirty all the way around during the war and after the war. The war was bad enough, but the Reconstruction was almost as bad. They were under military rule for five years. A military governor in Tennessee said all the white people should be thrown in the river. Wilson started the League of Nations, now called the United Nations. He signed it into law for women to vote. He was unable to do for blacks in the last two or three years of administration. He had a stroke and his wife acted as president. My dad was in the First World War, and he loved Wilson, for he was a strong Democrat and didn't play up to Republicans and do what they wanted. Lodge, a United States Senator from Massachusetts, was mad because Wilson didn't take him on the Peace Commission for the League of Nations, and so, when Wilson, when Wilson got over there, they hailed him the Messiah from the West. But when he got back, unfortunately, the Congress voted it down. But it came back with the, now it's called the League of Nations. So, John Tyler, a native Virginia, became president when President William Henry Harrison died after a month. They said he, he didn't wear a coat during the inauguration, and he got sick and he died. I suppose the reason for wanting to change the name of John Tyler's school was he owned slaves. Most of the slaves through this area were owned by blacks. I'm not condoning slavery, but I am tired of white people being blamed solely for it. Send, well, Martin Luther King marched for unity, not destroying white history. This hate and division is coming from the NAACP in Maryland to get money, also from Blackface North. He has hurt everybody in Virginia, blacks, whites, and everything in between. He's the worst leader I've ever lived under. These 42 people who signed the petition wanting to rename these schools apparently don't know their history, and some don't care. That it is white history they want destroyed. The Civil War was over- The Civil War was over, was over money and tariffs. John Quincy Adams imposed a tariff of abominations, which made what the South bought go up much as thirty percent. There was a tariff on corn, soybeans, cotton, et cetera. Why should the agrarian South support the industrial North? I think it was written in the textbooks, it was that, uh, the cause of the war was over slavery because, um, the Nor, the North wrote the textbooks after the war, after the Civil War. And the South has gotten a raw, raw deal all the way around. Thank you.[642.82][642.82](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Ms. Solins. Next speaker, Mr. Carlton Copeland.[651.54][651.54](CHEERING)
Thank you, uh, school board, for giving me the opportunity to speak, um, about the renaming of this building to Manor High School. Uh, I just want to talk about three things that has been fueling me is one that's gonna happen, and what's been happening, and what needs to happen. The name has to change, and I recommend that it be changed back to Manor. But what's been happening is, as you see all this red, white, and black in this room, and you see all this Mustang pride, this is just not for tonight. We've been sticking together through thick and thin these whole, this whole time.[714.63][714.63](APPLAUSE) Organizing, planning, meeting, retaining, and friendships, and we're gonna continue to do that. And as a school board, I know you have a responsibility to your citizens, and as I sat here tonight wondering what part of my speech I was gonna say, I don't really think there's a lot for me to say, because I think the people have spoke. I think the Mustangs, I came out last Monday and this Monday, and I think it's only rightfully so that if the name must change, then the name should be given back to the original name, which is the Manor Mustang.[744.63][744.63](APPLAUSE) And as the citizens of this city and graduates of this school, which is Manor, that we should have it back. And it will revive the communities that fed the school in the beginning. There's so many of us who are still here in the community, have businesses, have children, have grandchildren, that that legacy and that pride should be given back. And I hope that you take the opportunity and you guys have the opportunity to right the wrong, to fix what was done wrong in the past, and to help revitalize the city by giving the city history back. I understand part of it has to be taken away, Woodrow Wilson has to be taken away, but you have the opportunity to give Manor back. And when you do that, the citizens of this city will respond, and we will continue to, um, be positive within our communities. Uh, me myself, I'm a community activist in the neighborhood of Cavalier Manor. I've been there, been back five years working in that community, and I would love to see the name given back, um, to the original name of Manor High School, because we have pride, we have love, we have history, not only just in the school, but in the neighborhoods that fed the school. And, uh, I think we all want the same thing. So hopefully, you will hear the comments for the rest of the speakers and take it in consideration to re, uh, give Manor High School the name back.[827.32][827.32](APPLAUSE)
Now, thank you, Mr. Copeland. Our next speaker is Ms. Akoma Love.
I heard that. I heard that. That was good news, good news. (SIGH) Okay. Thank you. Jesus came that we might have life, and that more abundantly. This issue of changing the names, three schools. We have far more schools in this country whose names need to be changed, but I can't help but to feel for the young brother that left out. I don't know if anybody attempted to bring him back in. I'm noticing that we don't have young people here, well, I mean, we're all young, if you know what I mean, but the students. And, um, I think their voices matter. I, I don't know what happened, if they were solicited, uh, you know, concerning this matter or not. I'm from New York. I went to Stuyvesant. And when I leave here, I'm gonna work on getting that name changed, but in the process, we also have to change the curriculum. We're not speaking English because that was our language of choice, our native language. The history of this country and what it has done to our people has turned us into something that we're not. So while we're talking about the name, we need to look at what slavery has done to us, four hundred plus years. If you're not familiar with HR 1242, pull it up. And I think it's time, we have a history teacher here, I was glad to meet him, I don't know where he is right now. That is one of the most important subjects. We gotta get prayer back in school.
Yes.
We gotta get prayer back in school.
Yes.
We're calling all these blackmail preachers out here to come and stand with you, to do whatever is necessary, because once you change the name, you still have those other issues. And I know that we have the power to do it, whether you believe in God or not. The reality is, we need change. It's called the Declaration of Independence. Is anyone familiar with the Declaration of Independence?
No.
But it applies to us too. It is time for us as a people to declare our independence. When we had our Black Wall Street, we did not need charity, homelessness did not exist. We were self-sustaining. We're talking about the Tulsa, Oklahoma. If people will leave us alone, we can do what we need to do for ourselves and we don't have to go through this process. I understand you have to go through the process, but you shouldn't have to. If we do according to the word of God, then we can shorten our troubles. We're dealing with the issue of racism and all of the other symptoms of a bigger problem because as a people, we turn from God. Read Ezekiel chapter twenty-one, Ezekiel chapter twenty-two, it explains that. Because we turn from God and we took up the ways of a people not like us, what has happened to us is what is happening to us. And to our men, Ephesians six-four, fathers provoke not your children to wrath, but raise them in the fear and admonition of the Lord. The women are doing too much, the children are doing too much. It's time for our men to come forth, whether you're Muslim, Christian, or atheist. Whether you're Muslim, Christian, or atheist, you give birth to children, they need to be cared for, they need to be educated. Some man should have gone after that young man. He's angry because of what he heard an elder say who's not like himself. We have to deal with the table of brotherhood. Dr. King said, "One day on the Red Hills of Georgia," I had a dream, right? That the sons of former slaves and the sons of former slave owners will be able to sit down to a table of brotherhood. And we've got to deal with the hard issues or our children are gonna continue to be shot down in the street. Deuteronomy chapter seventeen, twenty, verse twenty says, "Men, if you want long life for you and your children, this is what you gotta do." Pull it up. Deuteronomy chapter sixteen and Deuteronomy chapter seventeen. Open that word and read it and believe it and act on it, because that's the problem. We have turned from God and it's time for us to turn back to God.
Amen.
Does everybody know, lift every voice and sing?
Yes.
Well, let's call the black church to open their doors twenty-four seven. Lift every voice and sing, and let's plant a seed for the change that we need. And change is not just money. We gotta change our mind. We've got to bring, other than French and Latin and Spanish, how many African languages are there? Anybody know?
Ms., Ms., uh, Love?
Oh, okay. I see the stop sign.
Thank you.
But I just want you to know, you have a homework assignment. How many African languages are there? Get them into school and teach the children, and let's become a people again. No more excuses.
Thank you, Ms. Love.[1211.58][1211.58](APPLAUSE) Next speaker, Ms. Cindy Thomas. She, she, okay. Okay, Ms. Amber Smith. Alright, is Ms. Amber Smith present? Okay, next speaker, Mr. Kenneth Pugh.[1237.83][1237.83](APPLAUSE)
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, school board members, fellow citizens. My name is Kenneth Pugh, and I was born in building one of the Naval Hospital in Portsmouth. I am a proud graduate of Manor High School, class of nineteen eighty-two.[1270.01][1270.01](APPLAUSE) And I've spent most, most of my life here in Portsmouth. I'm here again to ask this body to restore some dignity to our school. I say again, because the last time I was at this podium, addressing the school board, was in two thousand, October two thousand twelve, when the stadium miraculously got built outside, when we couldn't find a way to get one. But it got built, and they asked for inputs for names, and of course, it didn't, you know which way that went. So, I'm here again, and I say first, let's talk about the elephant in the room. Portsmouth, Virginia has a color issue that affects every aspect of life, of every citizen and every business. Now, if you think I'm talking about black and white, you're mistaken. The color issue that we have always faced is green, specifically a lack of it due to a reduced tax base resulting from approximately half of the city's land being untaxable.[1335.26][1335.26](APPLAUSE) Now, don't get me wrong, I love the United States Navy. I spent thirty years on active duty. I love the Coast Guard, the Post Office, and every other federal entity, but that lack of tax dollar hurts this city. But that is the issue that we will not solve tonight, but maybe the next city council will find a way to chip away at that. So, a lot of our disagreements start with that lack of tax base, because it's only a small amount of people who we're looking at to pay the taxes to keep this city afloat. So almost every decision that the city council and the school board makes are dependent on that. And when that happens, sometimes decisions are made, and maybe they're not always the best decision, and this issue is no different. I'm here to ask you to look at this issue from a standpoint of fairness. If a school building has outlived its useful life, most of the people are already accepting it. They're ready to accept it, form alumni group, keep in touch with each other, and move on. It happens in communities all over this country every year. It happens here in Portsmouth. There is no Cavalier Manor School, there is no product. Those schools went away. When their buildings went away, those school buildings went away. The people that went to them still exist. So this is no different. To simply take an existing school and erase its very existence for the sake of another school only ensures that the small tax base issue is not our only deep-seated unwinnable wedge issue. We don't need it. It's, it's an issue we don't need. So, I wasn't in the room where it happened when the decision was made, but, that's a Hamilton.[1453.51][1453.51](APPLAUSE) If you haven't seen it, you should see it. Uh, but how did it make sense to take from one group to make another group whole? If the shoe were on the other foot and the Woodrow Wilson High School was taken away to make room for our legacy, I would be standing here tonight on their side to say, "Give it back to them," because that is the right thing to do.[1481.01][1481.01](APPLAUSE) It's called being fair. It's fairness. So I, nor any other Mustang, hold any ill will towards any Wilson, Woodrow Wilson High School presidents. To a certain extent, they were set up to defend an original unfair decision by default. That's why some of them signed the petitions agreeing with us. All we are asking is that you restore this building to its rightful name and return the proud legacy to all who have a part in this building. So in closing, I will say, it's never too late to right a wrong. We know it will take time and money to fully execute a logical plan to rename this building, but I am confident it can be accomplished because it is the right thing to do. It wasn't free when the first decision was made, and it surely won't be free to undo it, but it is still the right thing to do. Thank you for your time and your consideration.[1543.13][1543.13](APPLAUSE)
Thank, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Uh, our final speaker is Ms. Kimberly Burkett.
Good evening, school board members, visitors, participants, and alumni of Woodrow Wilson High School. Isn't it wonderful to be in presidential territory? I'm gonna take a moment to address some of the items that were stated at the last meeting. There was a teacher that made a statement that if Woodrow Wilson High School was president today, black students would not be allowed to attend school, and he would not be allowed to teach. Woodrow Wilson did not segregate the schools. That was done by Jim Crow laws back in eighteen seventy-seven. President Wilson actually was in support of education of all students. He did not know what President Wilson's current beliefs would be because he's passed away in nineteen twenty-four, at least twenty years before President Roosevelt desegregated the schools. President Wilson did not get to see how much the world has changed for the better. Tonight, I'm here to talk about money, specifically the money it will take to rename the three schools Portsmouth Public Schools would like to rename. Woodrow Wilson High School, James Hurst Elementary, and John Tyler Elementary. The twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school budget, proposed budget, is for two hundred and ten point seven million dollars, and includes additional instructional and support positions, maintenance and upkeep of the division's buildings, technology updates, a two percent raise for all staff members, the addition of six school counselors, standards of quality initiatives to reduce counseling and staffing ratios, three special education specialists, three attendance liaisons, one additional school resource officer for the Churchill Middle School, and funding to support professional and development. Where does the school board plan to come up with the one point two million dollars it will take to rename one school? Does the school board plan to take the money from the general fund, the technology fund that's going to use to buy new equipment for the teachers and students? Does the school board plan to take the two percent raise for the staff members and allocate it to renaming the schools? Which line item from the, from the proposed budget does the school board plan to eliminate? The total cost to rename three schools would be an estimated three point six million dollars. Isn't there a better use for this money than to rename three schools? Shouldn't the education of our students come first? Couldn't the Portsmouth Public Schools use this three point six million dollars towards the trying to reopen the schools in a safe and secure environment? The city of Portsmouth is going through so much turmoil right now, from the administrative leave of the chief of police, the firing of the city attorney, into a statute following on the citizen of Portsmouth. What the city needs right now is peace. Can't the Portsmouth Public School Board see that renaming three schools right now is going to cause turmoil and suffering? In nineteen ninety-three, when Woodrow Wilson High School on Willett Drive and Craddock High School were closed, a subcommittee was formed of parents and students. When the determination was made to rename Manor High School to Woodrow Wilson, the school crest was changed. When you're leaving tonight, please take a look at the crest on the floor by the front door. It was changed to include Manor, Wilson, and Craddock High Schools. The year nineteen eighteen represents Woodrow Wilson High School, the year nineteen twenty and the anchor represents Craddock High School, and the year nineteen seventy-two with two hands shaking represents Manor High School. As you can see, Woodrow Wilson High School has already incorporated two other schools within its crest to show that we will always remember the three high schools that were combined. Also, the current crest was designed by a Manor student. James Hurst Elementary, John Tyler Elementary, and Woodrow Wilson High School are named after three white men to support the education of all students. If these three schools are renamed, that will leave two remaining schools to be named after people, William E. Waters and I.C. Norcom. Please note, Israel Charles Norcom and William Emerson Waters were both black outstanding educators who supported the communities. And today- In today's environment, diversity and inequality are two characteristics that should be displayed in public schools. If your plan on renaming the three schools comes true, how does Portsmouth Public School System plan to show diversity with their school names? If the school board does plan on renaming Woodrow Wilson High School to Manor to represent the surrounding neighborhoods, wouldn't that mean that I.C. Norcom and William E. Waters should be renamed to the surrounding areas or neighborhoods? William E. Waters is located in Cavalier Manor on Roosevelt Boulevard, so wouldn't renaming William E. Waters to Cavalier Manor Middle sound appropriate? As I stated in my last speech, my recommendation is to rename Woodrow Wilson High School to just Wilson High School. This recommendation is the most cost-effective way for the school system that is struggling with funding. They can still be called the Presidents, and their colors can still stay orange and blue. I would also recommend that you keep the names James Tyler, James Hurst, and John Tyler, so that Portsmouth Public School Boards can show diversity with the names of their schools. I will end by saying, "Orange and blue, always be true. Go, Presidents, go."
Thank you, uh, thank you, Ms. Burkett.
Excuse me, um, uh, thank you, thank you all for coming out and, thank you all for coming and, and speaking and expressing, um, we're taking everything and, we're, we're taking everything into consideration, and the committee will make a recommendation
to the full, uh, school board, and we probably will have a vote in December. However, I, I would like to correct something that I do not want to go out as misinformation to the public since this meeting is being recorded. There, there is nowhere that's been given or estimated that to change the names would be over three million dollars. That, that is absolutely incorrect. And we, we are waiting, uh, uh, the superintendent will share with the school board members on Thursday the estimated cost, the actual cost, uh, but we don't, we don't see it near a million dollars. So I, I do want to make that clear for the viewing public, that, that, that will not happen. And also, um, we do have a former school board member and also former councilman, Dr. Mark Whitaker, a Manor graduate, with us tonight. And, and as you said, you've had preachers, leaders, educators. He is a preacher, professor. He has his J.D. degree, so he is well-educated and represents a Manor High School. So without any further ado, if there's no other unreadiness, this public hearing is